Okay, welcome back to the Tuesday, July twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. Regular meeting of the council, the time is seven P M. And with that, I'll tell me order. Reporting out close, there's nothing to report out at this time. Council adjourned the closed portion of the meeting will reconvene after the open portion. So item number four, the adoption of the agenda. Any amendments, Council Broughton?
I'm two things, I'm wondering. Could I add a Kama letter? That's been received, I don't know if it's in correspondence or not. But if we could put a Kama letter regarding C A O. Mister Blackwell, I could put that into correspondence. It's in there, thank you, just to make sure. And also the the letter from Mister Valerie, Valerie Offie regarding C N, is that in the agenda already? Regarding the rail, yeah, it's in there, okay, thank you very much. Okay, in addition, I'd like to suggest that we move section ten point three point seven. Ahead of section ten point three point one. Because the items in that section are time sensitive. They were referred to, referred from the July eighth meeting. Which was a committee, the whole meeting, which became a S, a special council meeting. So I'd like to ask that ten point three point seven items be moved ahead of section ten point three point one. In the council section. And also, as stated earlier in an email that we add section ten point three point eight. Which is the motion regarding use of space. Which was consistent with a request of of me last Thursday. And also the C A O last Monday. So I just like to change the order of of the of the agenda there. So I noticed a change.
Just a pause for a second.
Sure.
You got all that?
Sorry. Great, thank you.
Any other amendments, Council McGlaughlin?
Thank you very much, Mayor Barry. Been a while since I've been, I've got a lot of suggestions here. So. Along with the time for this evening of key important points. I got ten point one point five. Which is the potential reduction of parking fines by twenty five, twenty twenty five. Suggest that that is taken off. My rationale is this would be part of a more wholesome parking plan. That should be done in September, October. So that'd be my first revision, so that would be off. The next one would be ten point three point two. Which worship. Which was respective theme of information request, which I thought was very good. But I think that's already been done, so I think that could probably be passed as well.
But that's in progress.
And so that's only in progress, so that should be deleted, so that's the second one. Number three, with all due respect to Mister Burton, ten point three point seven. Which is a review of previous media, the whole items. I'm of the view that we covered most of those items. And we need to move on, this is a regular council meeting, not a committed whole meeting. And that's just my point, I won't allow everybody to do the counter one. What I thought was ten point three point eight, which was the storage. E S S kitchen area. I see this as an operational issue, and I don't think this is up for discussion today. And the last one, which is fourteen point one, which I think is great. Is the communication protocols. I think that should be deleted, I think this is something where. The individuals who are involved should probably take this. That's the chambers to do. With that, those are my recommendations, and back to the chair of those.
Okay. Why don't we? Why don't we have a show of hands on Counselor Broughton's items?
Could I just clarify? I have some difficulty with items that have been referred to council to address. Being removed from the agenda. I I don't want to prolong this.
Which item would that be?
Section fourteen point one, section. Difficult to keep hold of the numbers in order here. Section ten point three point eight, was it?
And what's that concern, just so?
It's regarding the storage. It's not, it's not actually regarding the storage, it's actually regarding use of of village space. So it's, it's, it certainly has a consequence regarding storage, but it's regarding uses of village space, so. I I think the items that that are going back to section ten point three point seven. I've not only believe that it should be included in the agenda, but that it should be included. In a timely way, because the items that were mentioned there are of significant importance, they are. Regarding emergency management, updates on emergency management. Update, updates on the beach park revitalization and jetty replacement. Which are scheduled to begin in my understanding in September. Update of the Big Danny Creek debris flow, which is, I believe, is a critical matter that must be updated in every meeting. Is of critical interest to the village. That. That and that also. I, on the agenda for June, July the eighth was a discussion of Ecolite levels at the beach park. Which I believe had been addressed at that meeting. Perhaps we would be, you know, two weeks further along in in some kind of resolution. So I I believe that the items that were raised at that were placed on the big committee, the whole agenda. The reason why they're they're on. They're on a committee, the whole allows council to discuss them in a fulsome way. To bring all their wisdom to the to the table. And it's not just reacting and responding to emotion, but actually having, getting involved in a problem solving mode. So it doesn't need to be lengthy, but it does need to be. Does need to occur, so I, this is why I'm I'm asking the ten point three point seven. Not only remain on the agenda. And be dealt with in an expeditious manner, but that it be take place ahead of item ten point three point one.
Okay.
I just a thought, based on what I'm hearing, council wrestle with. There's every possibility you're not gonna pass the agenda tonight. So what you might want to do is vote on inclusion or movement, one by one.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, and then based on the outcome of that, you can adopt that, and then, you know, that's really help.
Okay, I apologize for the time it's taking to discuss the agenda, but it is a critical and pivotal piece. Of how this, how this council operates. And I can't state strongly enough that that removing items from the agenda is as far, as close to. Non democratic as I can, I can get to here.
Okay, so I'll call a vote on item ten point one point five, the the request was to table that, all in favor of table?
Table, yeah. So you guys, let's just catch up.
Ten point one point five.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, okay, this.
All in favor, opposed, motion carried. Okay, next item, item ten point three point, ten point three point two, all in favor of tabling this?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay.
Ten point three point seven, the committee of all.
Thank you. It, ten point three point seven, there was a motion to remove.
Just a firepoint, please don't miss the, it was a double, a double ender. It was to also.
Move it to the first place. To its proper place, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, let's just go with the motions here. That's okay, all in favor of removing ten point three point seven?
Yes.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, motion carried.
Ten point three.
Ten point three point eight, motion concerning space and storage. All in favor of removing.
I'm sorry, it's not the.
Or adding, sorry, adding, all in favor of adding? Opposed, first motion carried, or sorry, defeated. Okay, fourteen point one, fourteen point one. Right? Stand up page.
Communication protocols.
Stuck together, communication protocols, all in favor of removing that in?
You know what it is.
All in favor, okay, opposed. Motion carried.
So now the the resolution that council needs to consider is adopting the agenda as has been amended.
Okay, all in favor of adopting the agenda as amended?
I just.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, thank you for that. With that, we'll move to public participation.
Corporate discussion.
Do you need a second person?
Yeah, I need a second.
Okay, we need to move her to a document. Counselor. I'm a Glaughlin move, Counselor Rabbit seconded, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Okay, with that, we'll move to public participation. Anyone in the gallery like to speak, these are two minute time slots, we'll go to the gallery and then we'll go online, so. Ambis, if you'd like to approach the voting, thank you.
As you know, just to approve their fitting. If you're a gentleman, you know. That's, that is great, because it generates the revenue for life goals. And the other, the other hand, also the, they will get the benefit out of it, that is good. But this is one part. We had the experience before, that they came over there for the filming. And they have to have approval of the immediate impacted. Just unfortunately, this time, and we, I had a meeting with them for the last three times. That I am sure that Captain Broughton aware of that. And they, they give us the, they give us the accommodation and hotel, and we left. And we came back after that filming ended. Okay, this is fair for everybody. But this time. They convinced your liaison, which is Miss Jeffrey. I forgot the first name. Just. She, that, okay, because this is gonna happen inside, no impacted outside. They convince her, but this is wrong. Because I, as the expert, for five thousand dollars television, for example. And two and twenty two hours movies. Instructor of the communication filming and production in Europe and often United States. I'm aware of all the consequences. It's gonna affect, they, they, they didn't get, get any approval from us. So they said, yeah, we are gonna be here, no. The other three times, they, they received the approval, and they this. They gave us accommodation to, to leave, when it finished, we come came back. I would like to ask with that, just let them know that they have to talk with the impacted. I and my family, we are hundred percent impacted. Because they have to move all the facilities, sound equipment, lighting, or whatever camera, everything, and it's gonna impact it to our life.
Camp is, I'm just gonna let you know we're about fifteen seconds over the two minutes, if you can wrap up.
I did it, it finished, oh, I'm talking from, on my mighty half, and also my wife and my daughter that are impacted.
Yes, but they, they would have. They, they would have to be here, but continue on, and and you've got about fifteen seconds to wrap up, and then I'm gonna suggest. Then I'm gonna suggest that you direct your questions to staff.
Anyone have a question, I can give you answer.
Fifteen seconds, Camp is, thank you.
Please let them know that they, they, they need to, for approval of the filming, which is happening in August. They need, just give us the accommodation that you move and not impacted online. That's the only thing, and it happened before, Dr. Broughton knows very well, you know very well.
Okay, thank you very much, Camp is, I appreciate that, we're, we're at three minutes. Your points are taken, and we have staff here. You can approach them tomorrow or one of the working days, so thank you very much.
Someone coming and talking with us to give us that.
Okay, now, Camp is, if you'll take a seat, we'll move to the next person in in the audience, anyone else in the gallery like to speak?
Can I, can I just comment, we'll just.
Yeah, go ahead.
We were turned in the meeting that Steph had consulted with all the community, and then we're gonna take the normal, normal precautions. It's not what we're hearing now.
Okay, Mister Blackwell, you can answer that now, or you can answer it during work.
Yeah, I don't think it's particularly helpful to debate it, council meeting, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you so much, everybody, and just, that's how I call.
What I can advise counsel of is that the standard process is followed, and that always is followed. So I will confirm and report back.
Anyone else in the gallery? Yes, please stay, we'll go online after we've asked the people in the gallery to speak, so thank you.
Hello, staff is here to speak, I, sorry, I just, I'm sick, I can't, I'm on my phone and I'm not able to.
Okay, Karen?
Yeah.
Sorry, we'll, we'll take that offline, and you can, you can confer with Mister Blackwell and take care of this during business hours during day, okay?
Yeah, just to, just to confirm that it was all the pro.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, David Uro, and I am here with. Walt Simons and Gary Brown in support of our tree application near the entrance to Beach Park. And just wanted to introduce myself, that's all, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, anyone online, Crystal?
Uh, yes, man, David Shore.
Okay, David.
Hey, guys. I'm just sending an email off to you right now with a little bit more detail here, but thanks for the opportunity to address you all. I am here in support of the proposal for the redo, reduction in the parking fines. Studies show that increasing fines does not curb behavior. Think I learned that first in college psychology class about a million years ago. But in reality, if someone isn't deferred by a fifty dollar fine for an infraction. They're unlikely to be deferred by a hundred and fifty dollar fine either. What actually influences people's behavior is the perception of how consistently the law is gonna be enforced. If they believe there's a real chance they're gonna get caught. They're much less likely to break the law. A key factor in the decision that you guys have is how fair the fines are perceived to be. And how that perception affects people's views of our community here in Lions Bay. It's no secret to anybody here that on social media, we often have a negative reputation. And are seen as elitists and nimbyists and a lot of other negative connotations because of some of our existing laws. Choosing to lower these fines gives us a chance to positively address these perceptions. So I strongly encourage everyone to support option two and vote to reduce the fines of my respect. Thanks.
Thank you, David, anyone else online? Okay, with that, we will move to the delegations and Ruth Simons.
You think council, thank you for having me here. I'm going to address, take you out of the wonderful year here for the Lions Bay and into our beautiful. Region of Castle House Hound for a couple of months. Few minutes here, I'm here to ask for two things, first of all, I am a thirty seven year resident. But I'm also for the last ten years or more, being leading the initiative for the Castle House Hound. Was now in UNESCO Biosphere region. And many people think that that work ended with the, with the designation, but it's very much ongoing. And we are coming up to looking almost at, in another few years, and getting ready for a periodic review. So I'm here to ask a couple of things, first is for the Village Lions Bay to consider co hosting. The House Hound Community Forum in April next year with Metro A, our neighbors to the south. And also to, again, to re, support again the intentions behind the memorandum of understanding that was signed in twenty twenty two. So. Why our work is not just environmental, we have, as a nineteenth Biosphere region in Canada. And part of the seven hundred and forty around the world. Our role is to bring people together, to help address complexities. In places that have ecological significance, international significance. So our work involves communications, engagement, research and monitoring. And providing logistic support. So we leverage resources, we, this past year, we've managed to bring. An additional five, you know, half a million of additional resources. Half million dollars of additional resources into the region through the work that we do. The history of Lions Bay, as many of you know, and some maybe online don't know the history, but. It goes back to the, when we first moved here, you know, House Sound was, was dead, it was only really couldn't. Prong, you couldn't, the sound was there. It's through the work of people in late nineties, and Mayor Broughton, Fred Broughton was one of those champions to really work on bringing people together. And that's how they, from around this region, to be able to share and talk about these common concerns, this fear that we share. And so that created, that was the start of the Principles for Cooperation for Around Sound and the start of the House Sound forums. And there, Lions Bay, there has always been a big voice for saving House Sound movement here. So fast forward to today, we've been convening these forums, they're really well attended, many of you have attended the forums, and so. Part of the commitment, or the. Commitment that this Lions Bay made when it signed on to the nomination for us to become a UNESCO Biosphere. Was to, along with the other four municipalities, three regions, those are different levels of government. Was to take turns continuing to host the forums. The M O U just recognized our role in doing that work, and it was no other commitments, didn't bind the village to anything financially. Other than to support the ongoing objectives. So the biannual House Sound forums continue to bring people together, as you know, and the topics are. In, based on what is current and what the posts want to feature. The next one is on Golden Island on October third, at their brand new, brand new community center. Which is gonna be wonderful, and we hope to hear from the nation, this Fomish nation and the province on the. Very historical land agreement that was created. I'm just gonna share my screen. And just, I've got just a few pictures here. This was twenty seventeen, when Mayor Burr, at the time, was the host, co host of the. Metro, they're creating here in, at the Broughton Hall. The. Recent forum was at the District of Fomish, was the co, was the host in April, and was at their beautiful, brand new presentation center. So they're very well attended, and I think with Lions Bay, with its recent experience on the value of networking and knowing our neighbors. The need for cooperation and support. We're, we're very vulnerable here, on the sea to sky, and so it's very good time to share experiences, goals, and build those networks. So our Biosphere region, just as a reminder, is. Two thousand square kilometers, it's from the tops of the mountains to the bottom of the ocean. Couple of things that we've worked on recently, and there's a big list, but at one time, and one is to create an online seven module course called Biosphere One O One. It's aimed at the recreation tourism sector, but anybody is welcome to take it. So our work is to try and help again, group people to understanding tourism as a huge industry, outdoor recreation. And it has large impacts on our, on our footprint, on our lands, so helping people to help others when they come to this region. As to why we should be there. We also have, part of the M O U is to support with pride that we're part of the UNESCO Biosphere, so. There's an opportunity to do signage here in Lions Bay, we've got several signs around the region, so there's lots of examples, our staff are willing to help. And I'm sure we can figure out a way to pay for it, we work hard to do it. We also have, as part of our commitment to UNESCO, a management plan, so the management unit plan. We have twenty three goals and priority actions in that plan. We convene the House Sound Roundtable, which brings together people from different sectors, from around the region, to advise and steer us over time, so the opportunity to. Look at those goals to, when there's no C P review, or look at how you can report out on how Lions Bay is aligning with those goals. And wouldn't it, the Biosphere wouldn't exist if it weren't for communities doing wonderful work, not just the communities, municipalities, but the N G Os. Government organizations and individuals in communities, so Lions Bay, we're very, very happy to. Really report out the recent and very successful actions of the Climate Action Committee. The fact that we are air smart and bird friendly community, that we have our beautiful indigenous gardening, our butterfly project. Our access to the nature trail network. And then, of course, the recent additions of plans, and Lions Bay recognize them in that they're protected very daily, so these are all good actions, and. Find those without what other communities are doing around House Sound. It's good news, no need, good news, right? So the House Sound Marine Environment, we're all connected here to the marine. And we can thrilled by the impact whales and the action right along our shoreline. Which is an indicator of a healthy marine environment. We also convene the House Sound Ocean Network online four times a year, so it's an opportunity for elected, for anyone here. To tune in, and, yeah, sharing with other municipal elected people around the region. What we're doing towards the actions to, towards good ocean health. Are a couple of things that I think people would be interested in the, in the community is that there is a public comment period right now until August eighth. For the second hotel, sure would prefer around me, and if anyone wants to comment on making sure that the next crew boat. That goes up and down the sound, because it'll be doubling their capacity of crew boats, is quiet. It's, or at least below, you know, the acceptable noise levels right from the very beginning, so that's an opportunity for people to comment. Fisheries and Ocean Scanner, D F O just closed their public comment on a realignment of glass bungees. Marine refuges and rockfish conservation areas in House Sound. That will come as a surprise to villagers if, if there isn't some information shared about those changes, so. We'll learn more at the October third event, it's all good news. And then there's the V C Coastal Marine Strategy, which also lines up with our actions that our ocean watch taking. So how sound could possibly be a pilot area for the coastal marine strategy? So I could go on a lot more, and I'll offer anybody listening, if they have any questions, to always, please just contact me. And I'd be happy to do a Zoom evening, or. So lastly, back to my request, I'll report to you, and if you're willing to co host, spring, and. Just have a look at the M O U.
Okay, thank you very much, Ruth, really appreciate the work you've done. And Counselor Broughton, you had your hand up, and we'll go to Counselor McGlaughlin.
That we co host the House Sound Community Forum, April twenty twenty six. And that we allocate the twenty two hundred and fifty dollar request. Okay, do we have a second for that?
Counselor Rabbit, second, comments?
To Mister Broughton, did you explain part of signing a memorandum of understanding?
And also sign a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, wanted to thank you very much for your intervention with the, is it called the M E F ten?
Yeah, M E X.
M E X or M E, yeah, and. It's just a question, it, it is definitely, has been made quieter, but has it, has it become noisier again, or is everybody just getting used to it?
It is odd, I must say, we, we remark, why are we hearing it so loud?
Why are we hearing it again?
They, we were told they spent two hundred thousand dollars on mufflers.
Yes.
Why, it still sounds loud sometimes, I can't.
Yeah.
I think weather conditions have something to do with it, like the wind direction, for instance, that makes a lot of difference in the way to sound clear.
Okay, so. But I, I want to tell you, I was walking on the Fraser River in April, I believe it was, and it went past me on the Fraser River. And it has massive pipes come outside of it, so it's unquestioned why it's so loud, but, but it's just, it's remarkable. Anyway, and so I, I think it's something that may be an ongoing issue, we may have to stay on top of them, they also committed to a speed limit, I believe, as well.
Okay, Counselor Broughton, any other? Okay, Counselor Brown, any other?
Sorry, Dad, sorry, kind of shrug it.
All right.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Also with the place, that looks very, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor Berry, I wish I caught this sooner, something for the corporate officers, it's been a while since I did this, we agreed to bring something from. Closed into the open, which is zoning and development by law, which didn't make it to the agenda that was approved. So on that, I mean, that's what we thought we were going to do, I'm of two minds, you can just let it go in limbo.
Can I?
Or, or we can add, and I'll defer to the corporate officer how we get it back on.
Mr. Blackwell, do we need to add it now or add it later?
Uh, thank you, you can't add it now, it's adopted, but you can have a casual conversation about it.
Okay.
I can't, I think we just had it.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I was making a suggestion, is the one that asked to be moved into the open, thank you for reminding, it's too late. Um, but I think the general acceptance is going to come to the next council meeting anyway, correct? In, in the open.
I hope, yes, yeah.
And you will look at some direction, that's what you need to do.
Yeah.
Can we just nod our heads and say yes?
That would work for me.
Okay, nod, nod, nod?
Yes.
Okay, we're done.
All right, we'll move to item number seven, approval of the minutes of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Second.
Second.
Counselor Conlon, any amendments? Okay, all in favor? Oh, very, okay, motion to approve the July eighth, twenty twenty-five, special meeting of council minutes. Motion, okay, moved by Councilor Glockman, second, Counselor Conlon, any amendments, changes?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay.
So on page twenty-five of the agenda, this is an approved of the agenda point. Minutes read, posed Counselor Abbott defeated one to one.
Right.
Um, I wish I had the power of veto, it makes it a lot more efficient for everyone, but unfortunately I don't. I went and listened to the recording to work out what happened there, so it recalls the mayor was chairing remotely. My voice is the only voice that comes across as. Is opposing this, but then the mayor says defeat it. So it was defeated either four to one or three to two, that's not clear, but it was defeated not by one person, so I think we should record that as defeated by four to one. And, and the only person who approved it was Counselor Abbott. The mayor by abstaining approved it as well, so it should probably be three to two, if you want to record it accurately, and Mayor Brown and approved and the others defeated it.
Okay.
First off.
Similarly, on the next part, it was carried four to one. And, and it says opposed Counselor Abbott. So I went to listen to that one, I paused and didn't actually vote. So I actually abstained technically, and the reason was because there's a whole multi-action and I was only opposed to one of the many, so I was paused, but I didn't actually vote. So you can take off your opposed Counselor Abbott and make that carry. And then we moved on.
Okay, all in favor with changes? Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we'll move to business rising minutes, business rising.
On the previous minutes. On page eighteen. There's an action writing three forty-two, this is about super safe fuels and I see we have the. See if I'm audience, Joe. We. Yeah. We seem to, the council is probably aware that we've been back and forth on super safe fuels and using renewable diesel. And we now seem to have got to the point where we got what we're getting, I don't want to go into all the details. We're getting what we're getting and it's. We're getting better information, but it's not really what we were led to believe we were going to get, which was, we were going to get renewable diesel all the time. Which is what committee had been told, so that is not the case, it won't be the case. I would actually like to put an action on staff to review their contract and review other options because they all can, other. The suppliers will give us renewable diesel for the same price.
Hey, Mr. Blackwell.
I hate to be a stickler for process, what? How it should go and she should make a motion, that staff, X, Y, Z, and then seconded, then you can, you can debate it. So forth, so that's sort of the sweet spot, so.
Okay, this is something that's been discussed many times, that's all I want to do on the actual. Um, I've put a motion forward now on the fly.
All right, Counselor Abbott.
I've put a motion forward that, uh, counsel the next staff to review the super safe contract. And if you view to find out if the other suppliers that are more likely to meet a. Cause I'm actually committing requirements.
Okay, second. Okay, second by Counselor Conlon, we'll go around the table, any comments? Counselor Brown, Counselor Conlon. Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Abbott.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carried. Anything else?
On page twenty-seven, this is in the following meeting minutes. There's an action here for staff to provide concept sketches and village updates and, and get more feedback from residents. So this is about the bus stop, it's, I apologize, it's about the bus stop, that was the action that came out of the meeting, but it's not, can we add that to the log, please?
Mr. Blackwell.
So through you to counsel, I'm really not inclined to do that, the reason is I want this to be dragged out. It's, this is just a generic, off-the-shelf bus stop being paid for by the funders. And I, my concern is that this will then morph into something far bigger than it should be. The only reason why it's happening is because it's in an unapproved location and who, who is now MOTT. Advised us of this, they were sort of shocked that it was there, even though it's been there for how long, many years? And they've driven by it presumably for all these years and they were surprised to see it. So we're sort of following their request to relocate it to a safer location off the bridge deck. So if we can keep this as tight and discreet a project as possible, so we can get it done and dusted. And move on to other more sort of pressing projects, it would be my preference.
Okay, Counselor Abbott.
Yeah. So if you lost, we had a good discussion this, last meeting, you were in last meeting. The director of operations was, this was the conclusion we came to, the direction was council requested more feedback. We solicited residents staff to provide concept sketches and village updates, that was the decision that was made. And I'm, I'm not proposing a change to that, but someone else may if they want it.
Okay, Counselor Brown.
Um, I think we could, it's probably all the same to, to the funder. I think this is, this is a significant, it's probably going to be a somewhat significant statement in our community. I'm thinking that the, there's a bus stop in, in Kelvin, in Kelvin Grove. That I believe was designed by one of our local residents and I'm wondering if, if it would be feasible. For whatever design, whether that resident might be willing to. And enter into some kind of discussion, sort of be a, an expert available to, to consult, as a consultant on that. So I'm speaking specifically of Rob Simon, who may be missing my point here. Yeah. Um, we're talking about bus stop.
Yeah.
Being built over, over the corner and I'm asking whether it's, it's feasible for, to engage you. As a consultant, that, that you would consult with highways and, and the community to agree with that.
No.
You know, interesting.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mr. Blackwell, anything else you consider?
Look like you're about to speak.
I would just reiterate what I said.
Yeah.
We buy these bus shelters off the shelf with TransLink, it's quick and dirty, it's plug and play, it has all the LED lighting in there. So it'll be illuminated bus stop because it's a dark location and we, we just have to get it done, you know. Can't afford delays.
Yeah, yeah, Counselor Brown.
I totally support moving it quickly, I just think if there is an opportunity, we should try to do that because it will be there a long time. But I'm hearing that likely it's not going to be an opportunity, so.
Okay, any other comments, Counselor Abbott?
The other suggestion was the location you moved to the under. Of the old frame, and that was the other suggestion, that's why this was suggested we get into the feedback and village update. So I'm, I'm just repeating what happened in the previous meetings, just reminding.
Uh, just on that point, the, the proposed location is on the under. Uh, and so this discussion is, will be between the design engineers and MOTT. So MOTT have to approve it and ultimately, to some extent, the Blue Bus folks will have to be comfortable with it too. So this is purely an technical engineering exercise, this is not about anything more than the basic engineering. IT, IT generation manual and MMCD design criteria that's going to be applied here. Because MOTT have such significant safety margins.
Through the chair, Mr. Blackwell, this is something that we just stand aside and watch happen.
Please.
Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Abbott, any further?
Um, okay, so that one's not going on the action log, is it? Council changing that decision on that?
That's what I'm hearing staff, for sure. It was similar bus stop to the one outside the village hall here.
A little bigger.
Kelvin Groves is unique, it's beautiful, unfortunately, it has also been susceptible to vandalism. So I think that you're.
I personally don't like the Walmart special, to be honest, but anyway.
It's practical.
Let's move on in the spirit of time, anything else, Counselor Abbott?
Um, another one that I think should have been on the action log, on page. Twenty-nine. Um, chief minister of ourselves, we've been proposed to inter EPC program, call emergency program meetings, EPC meeting before the end of July. It's doable.
That's just for you, I will have to see if that's doable.
Can we put it on the log?
Well, there's a process in place right now, which is about completing contracts before we have those people in place. And the contracts are not in place yet, so it's a bit tricky, but what I can commit to is as soon as that, as soon as practicable, we will make that happen.
Okay, so we can just put it on the logs and.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else before we move on?
No, not from you.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move to reports and we'll move to ten point one point one, tree application, number one thirty-one.
Sorry, you, Blackwell, did, just compared Josh, sorry, we did not.
Yeah. All right, spirit of moving through the agenda quickly, we've missed action log, the action log, okay, just a couple of comments on the action log. If there is something specific that someone has a comment on, please bring that up and we're going through each item. Okay, so.
And.
Any comments? Okay, Counselor Abbott.
Very brief, myself and CEO had a discussion on item three twenty-one, which has been discussed in many meetings, we'll leave that there, we have a plan to go forward. Item three forty-two realizes the one I was just talking about, that was field. And I've no further comments.
Hey, anyone else?
Sorry, Counselor McLaughlin. Sorry, Mayor Berry, uh, something that came through the wires the other day and it doesn't have to be on the action one, but if you could tell us about it. It's this TransLink part B of fifty-six thousand dollars, it seemed to have just dropped out of the sky.
Yeah, thank you, Blackwell.
Through you, I'm not aware of this. Looking to it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send you the email icon.
Thank you.
Good, put that on the action line. Or look into it, okay, no other items? We'll move to ten point one point one and the tree application one thirty-one, tree petting application for Lions Bay. Beach park entrance recommendation is that tree application one thirty-one be approved as outlined in the package. We have motion flat, so moved by Counselor Brown and seconded by Counselor Conlon, discussion. Okay, Counselor Abbott, we'll go around the table, each council will have two opportunities to speak, maximum five minutes, Counselor Abbott.
I've read this package, actually, I should go read it a second time to be sure, but I don't actually understand what that resolution says, because I think there's more than one suggestion in the package. So I think we need to be clear what we're approving. Um, I, there's, if you look at the picture on page thirty-nine, there's three areas here, A, B, and C. And it says, no works are planned in area B. And the proposed topping area C, that's what the request was. The committee seems to, in one place, recommend removing all the trees in area C, that's not what the request was. As well as somewhere else about topping and area B as well and topping all three areas to the same height, so. I personally, I think I'm in favor of what the original request was. Um, because I believe people maintaining a view that they had before as reasonable. And it's always going by, so the bottom line has been on these things, that I'm removing additional he- healthy trees. Because the tree committee would like to get, like to see them gone, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, Counselor McLaughlin.
I have the same view as Mr. Abbott.
Okay, Counselor Conlon.
I was going to do that, I'm not sure why I were. Giving more recommendations outside of what the original ask was supposed to be.
So, and can I add to that, the tree committee also recommends that taxpayers pay for it because it wasn't requested.
Hey, Counselor Brown.
Um, I, I have to support the recommendation of the tree committee, area A is, is maintained. On an ongoing basis, presumably by the village, area C was requested by the residents, I think the tree committee, we have some, some. Anyway.
Sorry, Counselor Brown.
That, the, the, the tree committee was onsite, they're making a recommendation. They're very experienced, they're village residents and I would support their, their recommendations. I believe that there's, there's a reason for that, logically, I've, when I saw that, I was very pleased to see that, I thought it made, made the. The viewscape consistent, it also gave a view of as people came down the hill, which would be actually tremendous from Lions Bay Avenue. So I just didn't see any, any negative. Aspects to it at all, I think that by, if, if we're doing that at the same time as the others being done. The cost would be significantly less and I just think it's that, that we should be supporting our volunteer committees. And they're, they're making recommendations for a reason and, and that, I think it's that we should not be overriding that.
Okay, I would support the tree committee's recommendations as well, I'm on that committee, but I wasn't attending that particular meeting, Counselor Conlon.
I'm curious as to whether anybody consulted the homeowner directly next to the beach. If you remove all of these trees, you've now exposed those homes directly to everybody that's coming down. Lions Bay Avenue and that is not what they've been used to, I would imagine. Last couple decades that some of them have lived there.
They're being taught not to move.
There was a discussion.
Once again, there were.
Okay, we're actually going to, again, we're going to go around the table, Counselor, Conlon has the table.
So again, I, I appreciate all of our volunteers and recommendations that are coming from committees, but I think they. Some of this seems more operational and not just the resident committee, I mean, we had a parking committee and there were suggestions, but we didn't just pass them without further thought. The tree committee, from my understanding, is there to look at the application. The tree committee, from my understanding, is there to look at the applications that's put forward by the residents. And not add additional scope to a job that wasn't even asked for. So I'm confused by that, but. Yeah, so I wouldn't support the recommendations of tree committee, but I would definitely support the permanent application.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Blackwell. I'm going to suggest we've got some of the residents in the room. We might go get firsthand feedback, but Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you, um, I was privy to this. I wasn't here when this this came up, and I haven't had time to look into this. Uh, but, uh, I was going to say two things. There are residents in the room that can speak to this. Secondly, uh, council's not, if it's not super time sensitive. Uh, council's not compelled to make a decision tonight. If you council, it's better for council to direct staff to come back with more information around various question than it is just to. Uh, deny an application, hold its promise, so, uh, those are.
Okay, no, great suggestions. Uh, we've got residents here that did you want to speak to?
Well, I just wanted to point out that area B, which we're now discussing, and I came kind of out of the blue. I mean, it was discussed at onsite meeting, but it can always be done. If we're like what happens in area C, you go, that's pretty nice. Let's do that. And then you can work that out as a village, but. You know, I don't think if you hamper the application as it stands right now.
Shouldn't have to see.
At all times.
Should not have to see.
Are there two residents?
I'll I'll just say, um, to Counselor Conleff's question, I did go to the house immediately next to the park. I handed the package for feedback like I did to all of the other residents who all said that they were in support. Uh, the person who I handed the package to said that they would give it to the tenant, like the lead tenant, I believe it's a rental house. And, uh, we did not get any feedback, one way or the other, about this particular application. That's the first thing. The second thing is, um, just with with respect to the tree committee meeting and the recommendations. The original proposal that, uh, the three of us put together was to top area C to the previous height. We had discussed potentially topping area B as well to the original height. And when the three of us got together, we said, let's start with C. Because we agreed that would be good. When we met with the tree committee, they said, if you're going to do C, you might as well do B as well. So that all three are at the same height. That was the first discussion with the tree committee. Then the tree committee said, maybe area C, because that's the small peninsula land. Right by the entrance to park, instead of being topped, should be taken right down and relanced. None of the three of us were opposed to that idea. Um, just living here, we think it would actually look nice in terms of getting to the park. But ultimately, what we were interested in. If I could, I mean, tell you if you agree or disagree there, was. Let's start with area C. The tree committee suggested, let's do B and C, because if we're topping it, you don't want to. One of these, like a top hat type of a situation. So from my perspective, I I can't speak for these two, I'm fine with topping C. Or topping B and C. I do not request anything beyond that. And I'm not sure if, I think Eric feels the same, but I'm not 100% sure about Rob, but. Um, C was the highest priority to us.
Yeah, and that's why we apply for thinking that, knowing that it would activate. Something bigger happening for the entire area.
Right, Mr. Blackwell.
So I can add, this is a separate discussion, but related. My suggestion to council is on municipal land, never to top trees. Top trees are always a maintenance hassle and a danger. So it's better to re- to remove trees that are problematic and replace them with something different. Either a smaller tree species or other forms of it, even then are easier to maintain, et cetera. Rather than topping and having to re-top every few years and then have the leader branches pose a risk in the windstorm. Just as a general comment.
The the application does point out that there is like a dozen of the larger trees that are removed to the ground. Because the tree guy, if I correct me if I'm wrong, suggested they would not survive the topping, another topping. So the application is to remove ten or eleven of the big trees, like down to the ground. Right?
Yeah, it was essentially their. The cedars would stay with the thought that once they are topped, they'll regrow, fill in, et cetera. There's a number of firs that were topped, uh, about ten, I think maybe eleven, about twelve inch firs. And they are unlikely to survive if they're topped to where they were previously topped. They're all in the middle. Uh, honestly, uh, nobody will notice that they are gone because the cedars will fill in instantly right around them. That's in area C. That we're talking about, right?
Counselor Brown. Um, could I suggest that that we approve the, um, tree application as originally presented? And allow the residents to move forward. And and as they say, it depends on what it looks like, uh, we can always do the other later or whatever.
Okay, Counselor McLaughlin.
I'm of the same view as Counselor Brown. I think the request is for the. For area C, that's fine. Area B, I think, um, well meaning that the tree committee be maybe. Uh, the fact that we would be removing trees that are caused replanted, they're a cost. And generally beautifying the area. Substantially to improve views of some residents that doesn't help, uh, Mr. Abbott, but timber top doesn't help the ocean view. Uh, and I think it's a big discussion, and we want to be replanted around the entrance. So the key piece is on the, uh, Councilor Brown's views. So for the application here. For you see, this was the point eight, B, delete for area B. Cost consideration for the applicants and everything else is in.
Okay, so that's second, uh, any further discussion, question? All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks for your feedback. That was appreciated.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move to ten point one point two, and giving the D C municipalities content costs and registration. Uh, we have a report for information, any comments?
So much. Um, I've got a couple of comments.
Thanks, everybody. Good night, guys.
Thanks, guys. Um. So it seems largely affects me. Um, took a couple of comments. I had already sent an email to staff and copied all of council saying, I do not want to stay in a five hundred dollar hotel. Please book me into budget hotels. So that stands. No need for me to stay in expensive place. Right, yeah.
Mr. Blackwell.
With a ten point eight.
Do you have a used shopping cart?
Backseated.
Um, I.
All right.
I will, I I I will not be driving to the Wausau to catch a ferry. I will be using an armor. I'll make my own ferry arrangements. Um, I need to do that for me. Thank you. I don't see any need to be there on the Monday because none of the meetings, none of the Monday, there's no Monday meetings, it's workshops. None of them are Thursday, anything happening in Lions Bay. So I'll travel on the Mondays, I need accommodations, I need from the Tuesday nights. Um, as to whether I go alone or the CEO joins me. That seems to be part of the reason, one of the reasons for this. Um, I, my initial expectation was, I didn't need any handholding. I didn't expect to have a ministry meeting of any sort. However, in the discussion today with the CEO, this is suggesting we might have a ministry meeting around the hundred percent grants. If that's the case, there'd be an exception. I've been, you just see, at that meeting, I don't believe you need to attend the rest of the conference, not for my benefit anyway. Um, the office stays a week, but if we do have a corporate, a meeting on the on the grants, then obviously we need to be there. So that's my my thoughts.
Okay, uh, any other comments? And and I'm sure you two can work that out offline, yeah.
Thank you, Blackwell. Thank you, uh, I will, I'll, the emotion. Well, the emotion from council.
I thought I understood the report was for information, only thinking.
Probably will need one ultimately as to who's going to go. The second, uh, is whether or not council wants to request a ministry meeting. That's going to have to be a reservation. Uh, and we can figure out if if council is comfortable with the general topic, I can work out the details, but it needs to be formalized.
Okay, uh, we can request a meeting. Hopefully we get it, so I don't see any issue. Um, you want to put Counselor Abbott forward a motion to request a meeting, uh, to for you to attend, Mr. Blackwell accompanying you.
Okay, I'll put it forth.
Okay, a second.
Second.
Counselor Brown, all in favor?
I.
Oh, motion carried, okay, anything else?
Uh, and that, Counselor Abbott, assuming Counselor Abbott's the only person attending U C M.
He made the decision already. He made the, he changed that.
Okay. There you go. All right. Uh, we'll move on to chain of office, uh, ten point one point three, and Mr. Blackwell, uh, you can explain the importance of that chain.
Thank you.
It seems to be.
So, uh, well. So, yes, so the the report, it sets out all of the rationale as to what it is, why it is, and so forth. It's pretty common. I don't think I am aware of a single municipality that does not have that as an official sort of. Element, uh, it is not cheap. Uh, nor should it be if it's supposed to have the significance that it's intended to. It shouldn't be made another old update. It should be, it should have some significance to it. Uh, once it's acquired, uh, the names of all the mayors are added to that chain as part of the history and heritage of the community. And it gets put up usually in the cabinet on the wall, and then there there it is, uh. Brother becomes, yeah, and it becomes part of sort of the, uh, that register of artifacts. Government's artifacts that will be part of the municipality for decades.
Kind of like a family company, I'll need that.
Certainly.
Okay, maybe you go back retroactive.
Yep, from the beginning, truly steer it, yeah.
Good, okay, um, what are you looking for on this?
I need direction from council.
Okay, um, motion to purchase the, uh, chain of office. The village of Lions Bay. Would anyone like to put forward a motion on that?
Could I ask, is there any way of, it it's very symbolic, right? And, uh, very ceremonial and so on. And historical society comes to mind. Um, I'm just wondering if there's any way that there's there's funding. Some kind of a ceremonial rant or signing against this. I just, I just feel a bit.
I'm frustrated, if I may, sir.
Yeah.
All large and small communities have got the, this. Don't care which, uh. It is a third of our size. I think Jamie Ross stoops his shoulders when he wears it, personally, although luckily. Ralph Drew was mayor for twenty years, and it's just one one stamp. Uh, I think here that this probably won't be consumed well by the public. I think it's something that's of interest. Uh, I think the historical society, I'll, I'll present that to them. We have something on the plate now. But I can see them getting behind this in a different way. I think thirty five hundred dollars was the number I I heard, so that's that's not a monstrous number. Um, I also think that, uh, we can't do it within a short time. If and when I ever retire from politics, I'll make a gift to the village of this. So I I think that I like the idea. I just think the time is wrong.
Okay, I think there will maybe an opportunity for someone to donate it. It's not. I'm going to call it here, maybe somebody else. I think it's something we should be aware of exists. We put it into the historical hopper type of thing. But I.
Okay, so there's no motion, and I think this is good information, and, uh.
This is not a bad idea. It's just, I think, not just ready yet.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to the next item. Uh, the ten point one point four, twenty twenty six annual budget timeline. An outline of the budgetary timeline for twenty twenty six prepared by financial officer, uh, Joe Chirkoff. Uh, for information, uh, Sir Chirkoff, Mr. Blackwell, can you hand up?
Yeah, so, uh, there's nothing really to add to this. This is just for council's, uh, information. Uh, you recall that last year, uh, Mr. Chirkoff brought forward a similar calendar, um. It may be a little bit ambitious for this council, but it should, it's very doable. It shouldn't be overly ambitious. What will be key for us, and Joe primarily, in being able to achieve these targets, which would be a a gen, uh. A budget adopted by the end of the year, which then allows, uh, planning. For twenty twenty six to kick off early while we're waiting till halfway through the year almost. Before we know what the budget is, will mean that council has to be, uh, able to stick to that timeline. And which means that council will have to, um, convey its its wishes, its hopes, its desires, what it doesn't want to see. Et cetera, et cetera, and finally fashion, so that Mr. Chirkoff is able to utilize that information and and tee this up. With efficiency as the goal. So, um, I don't know if Mr. Chirkoff wants to add anything to that, but that's why it's.
Uh, can you, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Um, I would just, uh, again, uh, so the timeline has been, um, prepared as to where that it conforms with current council schedule. Um, there is on the second page, um, stars here on, um, for current, keep the whole dates. Uh, recommendation that it's every seven one meetings. These weeks to make sure we keep focus on what were was being discussed and then. A momentum to get certain parts of this thing kind of agreed on. Uh, this best really just, uh, what I would, uh, like for council to consider. Um, uh, in in the view of this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Chirkoff?
Um, I just think that in in lieu of the fact that I think we're, you know, we're caught up with all that. I hope, um, and, uh, that that we should make this our to our target, our goal, and that we should seriously look towards it.
Okay, Counselor Abbott.
Uh, a couple of flaws in the plan. Um, we got the, uh, CapEx for supplementals, as described with capital budget supplementals. Three workshops, the final ones on September the ninth. September the ninth is the night of the IC meeting. So there's a clash. It also happens to be the first IC meeting after the recess. So by the time we get to to the final night for supplementals, we wouldn't have any from the IC. And for that matter, all the CAC, because the CAC's first meeting is on the fourth of September. So, um, we'll only be staffing supplementals will do then. We'd have to do. Other supplementals, and one of the main staffing supplementals is normally, um, from the director of operations, then it normally comes to the IC for discussion. Point and support. So I think we need to give a little bit of a rethink around that.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
So there is flexibility on this, uh. The thing I would really caution council about around to manage is the drift. The drift with regard to the circular conversations that, uh, drag these things out. One way to deal with this is bring all your committees together. To have a conversation with all of the staff together in the room, so that would be the, the, uh, financial officer, the director of operations, and whomever else. So everyone's together in one meeting, hopefully, they can identify the priorities. Staff also needs to do this. It hasn't been done effectively up to this point, but senior staff have to do this too. They create sort of two lists. The list is, what are these items that are critical? And what are the consequences of not doing them? And then what is, are the nice to do items that are are coming up behind? With those lists, council is going to be able to to either rely on those or switch things out. Uh, but the goal is, before we really kick off into anything, we need to do all this upfront work. So that means we've got to manage these committees, and the priority I would advocate is council. Council meetings and council decisions have to supersede everything else. And with respect to those asterisk items, staff is recommending that council consider compressing for only the purposes of budget process. Compressing the schedule into several days in a row so that you can obtain the information. It doesn't have to be super long draft out meetings, but keep the information going fresh and 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 sort of nimble if you're going to move the process forward.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. You have your hand up.
Um, yes, and just to that point, uh. Staff are welcome and invited to committee meetings. Director of operations comes to both. The CAC and the IC meetings, it comes to which all IC meetings, obviously, then comes to the CAC at budget time, that's normally fixed, which is. It's normally fixed, what he needs to get done, um, we get his input at that meeting and those recommendations come across. Um, I think that process works well and that's why we need to combine the two meetings, we just need to make sure we have them in the right sequence.
So Blackwell.
Thank you, just another thought for me to share, that is, one of the challenges with budgeting is competing interests. And they having to sort out whose interests supersede other interests. And that happens when process is siloed, so these committees are siloed, making their own decisions without the benefit. Of inputs for other, from other committees and other information sources, so that they can step back and say, well, maybe relative to what I've just heard from. X or Y, maybe that shouldn't be such a high priority for us. So I would, I would suggest that avoiding siloed budgeting approach is the way to go. If you want to ensure the most efficacious approach to uh establishing priorities for the budget. I would also say at the final, I've said this before, it would be very, very helpful. You have council, it's too late for council strategic plan at this point now, but if council could establish through this process. Parallel to this process, a list of priorities, we'll call it a priority plan for this upcoming remaining whatever number of months. So that uh, that that um. Staff have sort of clear direction regarding priorities of council from a financial perspective and and other perspectives as well.
Okay.
Councillor, don't be a little too long, um, C A C has a very defined budget, LGK money. And the D C recycling money, that's what they use, that's what they allocate and they involve workshop manager, it's not really a silo, so it's it's not competing with anything else. They don't take any money, they don't ask for budget outside of those two funds, so they're pretty clear, I C does the rest of it, so I think it works fairly well. Um, you'll be pleased to know that council actually have those priorities, you just haven't received it yet.
Oh, okay, gotta look forward to.
Yeah.
Okay, councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you very much, very, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Blackwell. And Mr. Turkoff, I fully endorse this shortened period for the, this interesting calendar, Christmas comes early this year, seemingly it does every year, but. You know, when you back off from the twenty fourth, which is midweek, to get it done in the office, closing and assuming weather's all good. You're really, uh, I'm not sure where the thing is, it's something I'll talk about in camera. But if you were to say hypothetically start on October the first, I can't see in God's green earth why this budget can't be done in the second week of December. Quite frankly, I'll commit to it, I mean, we've got enough financial muscle in this council. And I think even if we just do the operations side, the the way the rest will come along, the council will. Um, so that's my piece, and that's my commitment to the team to the hustle this one.
Okay, great, all right, uh, no decisions needed or?
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to uh ten point two point one, silent action, and we have a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty second. Twenty twenty five, okay, by councillor Abbott, second by councillor Brown.
By me, or just for information, yeah.
Just for information.
Oh.
The reason that only the committee can approve its minutes.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
So this is the committee reporting to council, so they're on your councils convention, unless councillor Abbott who's chairing that wants to raise any points.
Okay, councillor Abbott.
I didn't ask for the, I didn't ask for the agenda, it just happened to to routine staff.
My, my understanding.
If if I want something, I would prepare a report, I didn't ask for you.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I can take questions.
Okay, we'll move on, uh, we'll move on to ten point three point one, Lions Bay Beach Park Wildlife Management Plan. Uh, the proposal is the development of beach park wildlife plan in response to repeated closures due to high coliform counts. Uh, recommendation is that staff present council with a draft plan of a beach park wildlife and water quality management plan recommendation by November fifteenth, twenty twenty five. In preparation for the twenty twenty six summer session. Would anyone like to move that motion? Okay, councillor McGlocklin moved, councillor uh, front and seconded, any comments, questions?
Thank you, I very finally go first, uh, are you looking for? Um, thoughts and feedback, or are you looking for the file document or just?
No.
I know what the problem is, I'm looking for it.
Yeah. Just, um, they, really the purpose of this is for staff to look into this, look at what the alternatives are. Um, and seek any feedback if they require feedback, and we've got staff in the room that. Mr. Blackwell, do you want to comment?
Sure.
Anything you'd like to add to this?
Well, I have to be the harbinger of bad news. So we don't have the capacity to do additional work, we are oversubscribed, there's just no more gas in the tank, we can't fit anything more on our agenda. That includes managing consultants, which takes a lot of time, you just don't tap on the shoulder and then we go, there's lots of time. Uh, that's number one. Number two, we got to figure out who who would do it, it would have to be an R F P, council would have to establish budget, because we don't have the expertise in having to do this work. Uh, and three, I would say from my personal perspective, um. My recommendation of count would be this, if council is inclined to spend money, it would be to do a scientific assessment. To rule in or rule out potential sources of contamination. Because there's a lot of speculation, from what I'm hearing, is what it might, as to what it might be, what it might not be, but speculation is not science. So if you want to spend money, it would be on, take the first step. To do it to the scientific uh assessment to determine if you could figure out what it is, if you can. Then council will have some purchase of the issue, make decisions around what the report or the findings may say, if it can't. There's no point in spending more money if you can't pinpoint the source.
Okay, I think the motion was for staff to look at this and and pretty much everything you've described, come back with a little bit of a report. And some recommendations, and then uh council would decide whether uh we're prepared to spend money, if that's a requirement, or. Uh, we're prepared to see, uh, if you said volunteers should be out. Shoveling poop or or, uh, you're gonna also look at, uh, I imagine all sorts, not just, uh, not just wildlife.
So, thank you, so uh, based on what you're saying, uh, what you're, what the resolution says is, present council the draft plan. That's not the same thing in terms of how how we would operationalize it. So if the desire is for staff to present council with some ideas as to how to approach this issue. What are the different vectors available to approach this issue, we can certainly come back with staff report, so here are the different options. That council could consider with regard to diving into this topic, is that sort of where you?
I I think it's come back with a plan and and give us some options, because um, the current situation is, I I don't think any of us. Are happy with this, and if there's something that could be done to minimize and open up the park to to our residents, uh, then we want to do it. Councillor, come.
To the point that we're going to be sinking a lot of funds and effort and time to the beach park renovation, to have it. Un- unusable is just, it's a nonstarter, yeah, we need to get to the bottom of this and we need a management plan.
Okay, councillor McLaughlin.
Uh, thank you, so I think we're on the same page here, so uh, through Mr. Blackwell, so the resolution's on the table, I mean, I think you know what the gist is. Uh, does that work for you, if it needs a minor word?
Mr. Blackwell, thank you, no, what this resolution says is that staff are to develop this plan, as draft to bring it back, we don't have the time or expertise to develop a plan. And that that plan will take, a plan, a wildlife plan takes biologists. And these, there's two different subjects here, right, one is water quality, those are engineers, wildlife, biologists, if you want to combine those, they should be separate, but if you want to combine them. Those are two sets of consultants, that's probably a four month exercise, and if I were to spitball a budget, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars. So, uh, that's what this resolution says.
Councillor Brown.
Uh, we're, we are not the only municipality facing this issue, so I I think, uh. What word would replace plan that would allow this to move forward? I I heard a word and then I can't remember what it was, but options, bring bring.
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you, through you, uh, it depends, if if council's desire is to have a plan. Then this resolution stands, this is that, that's what this does. We can't do that, we have no budget nor staff time to do it, if council on the other hand is looking for a staff report that says, here are the different ways. Suggestions. Yeah, that council could consider exploring.
Yes.
Then that's very doable.
So how would you reword this?
That's what I'm looking for, words that would do that. Uh, on the fly, that's that staff be directed to uh provide a report that sets out options for council's consideration with regard to. Resolution of E coli issue at the beach park.
So moved, okay, seconded.
Ten.
Second by councillor McLaughlin, uh, any further comments?
Well, I haven't had any answers yet, so.
But sorry.
But you haven't gone around the table yet and get to me, so, yes, I would like.
No, no, I, we just made motion, uh, so we are going around the table, you put your hand up, councillor Abbott.
Um, what was discussed earlier, um, Ross, thanks for bringing that up, that was troubling me inside, we were jumping to a plan, we didn't necessarily know what the cause was. Um, that may well have something to do with geese. Possibly, probably, I don't know, but we don't know that, we certainly don't know that, um. To Michael's point that other communes got the same thing, when I read this on Friday, uh, it was on the news at the same time, eight beaches were closed. In in Metro Bend, eight beaches, um. And there was various people interviewed, none of them wanted to go out and and decided it was geese, there's all kinds of possibility, so we need to make sure we know. Before we go come up with this plan, I should, I appreciate, we need to work out what problems, no, no, the problem is before we come to a solution, so. I appreciate that, so staff are gonna come back with a with a report on ways to go forward with that, I I think that's acceptable.
Okay, any other comments? Councillor.
Um, I I I think we have a, an issue with geese on the beach. Now, like, it it appears very likely that that has some impact on on our eagle, it may not be all of it, maybe some of it, whatever. It is, however, a significant issue on our beachfront, we have. Knee deep goose feces.
Exaggerated.
As as thick as an inch in some locations, a goose feces, which people are walking through, putting blankets on. Um, et cetera, and it is a serious health hazard. Whether it's it's enough to close our beach or not, is another, is is parallel to that. Certainly, it's it's a problem with our beach and and swimming, however, um, we have an aging population. We're encouraging families to to join our community, and we have a serious, serious uh issue with. A a blanket of goose feces at the beach, and uh, we have as many as twenty geese. On on site, most of, most of the time, they're they're not there during the day, if people are there, but uh, but uh. Science, but speaking of science, we have two to three pounds per day, feces from each goose, twenty geese is forty to sixty pounds.
Councillor Brown, just kind of like you, you're close to the five minutes.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm. Uh, we wait, I think it's a matter that we must address, and it's not solely an equal I matter.
Yeah.
It's it's a matter that we must address.
Oh.
In terms of the choose.
All actual councillor Brown's concerns, there have been public recreation fields in the lower mainland, and I'm sure globally that have been shut down. My nephew's field at his elementary school was unusable for two years because of geese. Again, they are territorial, they can be vicious, and one of them is going to bite a chat, and the repercussions will fall on us as a village. So we need to control, we we are, it's a recreational facility for people, it is not a. Cohabitat for animals and people, there's hundreds of miles of coastline that they can choose, they do not need to settle there.
Okay, any further comments for call question, councillor Abbott?
Just. I understand everything Jamie's saying there, I'm not disputing her concerns. And just concerned that we be careful how we present this, because um, we've already had. One case of a of a dog killing a gander um down on the beach this year. Um, another case of the goose that was hurt the other day, it was also people chasing it, um, with a broken wing, it's, it's just. Understand, let's just all make sure that we don't inflame that rhetoric, I don't want something untoward happening, if it's, I mean. Whether we like it or not, there's provincial rigs, um, protections for these animals, we need to make sure we work within their framework and understand that, that's all.
Okay. Fifteen seconds.
Um, I I I think that we really need to look very carefully at at the the amount of money and energy we're putting into the beach. But we need to do everything possible to keep it usable and that, um.
Okay, uh, we've gone around the, I'll call a question all in favor of the motion as amended by Blackwell. Yes, opposed, motion carried, okay, uh, with that, we'll move on to. Uh, item ten point three point three, uh, bylaw four fifty five, twenty thirteen garbage and recycling collection, section seven revisions. Suggestions at council twenty twenty five. Ash zero zero seven, recommendations from the Paris Spark Committee for revisions of the section seven presented by councillor Abbott. Recommendation that the staff be direct to prepare draft amendments to section seven, uh, garbage recycling, uh, bylaw number four fifty five. Two thirteen to address the following considerations, and I won't leave them all, but there are six considerations. I do have motions for that, okay, councillor Abbott moved, councillor McLaughlin seconded, uh, discussion. Okay, councillor Abbott.
Um, I I just want to make a slight change to the resolution, this is a discussion with um, the C I A earlier today. Um, my original request was for for a um, a draft, my original request was for an updated bylaw. Um, and it came out, I asked for that on Thursday, by the Friday, the the back and forth, it was too late to do. To revise the bylaw for a reading in this meeting. Um, there is a timeline here. Bears start hypothermia in September, they do it every year, it's always in September regardless of weather or any conditions. That's when they start eating a whole lot extra, that's where they start looking for stuff, uh, any stuff that's lying around. Um, bears do not hibernate, and this is in a timeline, but that they they do start hypothermia on a timeline. And we need to make sure we begin in front of that. Um, so I want to go, in the discussion with the C I A earlier, we agreed that we could prepare a a bylaw revision for the next meeting. Not a a draft to address the following considerations, that was the intent, just the way it's worded isn't quite clear. And I'm like, are you good at Ross?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's with the intention of bringing back a direct a bylaw revision to the next council meeting. For reading, first and secondly.
Okay.
And can I?
Yeah.
Also kind of friendly amendment to the recommendation. That where a resident is unable to comply with the area of collection schedule and also unable to access the drop off option curbside placement food waste and garbage may be permitted. After seven thirty A M on collection day, provided the materials are stored in a village approved wildlife resisting container. And there's an example of Rawlins Clip Block style or other food container, and a permit has been issued by the village for such use. And I would add that in the case of proven hardship, village approved wildlife resistant cans will be provided to residents. So that's taking it to the next step, that if somebody truly is, this is a reach for them to be able to do, that we have a solution in place for them.
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you, uh, through you to actually all the council on this. Uh, my suggestion is with regard and due respect to these six items. Many of these items don't belong in a bylaw, that doesn't belong in a bylaw, that will just be a council policy. So the the goal of bylaws is to keep them clean, easy to understand, and when we put into the bylaw those matters you want to regulate. Uh, where you don't need to regulate it, you establish processes and protocols through policy or operating procedures or whatever, so some of it, so. This is sort of bifurcated, can be, and so this is what I'll bring forward, uh, to councillor Abbott's point, I'll bring forward what I recommend the changes to be. And then you can add and subtract to that at the time of first meeting, you may say, wow, this is fantastic, Ross, I don't think I've ever seen a better written bylaw. I have no comment, or.
Good, we'll just do six points, yeah. So this gets received and you come back in a second.
Okay, do we need to pass the? Okay. Do we need to pass a resolution? You've thought this.
You see it?
Well, we really, we read the resolution.
Yeah, you read the resolution.
So we just want to change the word draft to bylaw revision to the next council.
But it is a draft.
Yes, but not for consideration. It's a bylaw revision. It reads directed by the draft amendments to section seven about addressing for to the next council meeting for first and second meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, they are draft.
Yeah, but for first and second meeting, just.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we will move to uh, ten point three point four, council calendar meeting change proposed by Council McLaughlin to eliminate the remainder of the committee of the whole meetings and replace the regular means of council. Recommendation that council resolves that the remainder of twenty twenty five committee of the whole meetings are canceled and replaced by regular council meetings. We have motion for that. Okay, Council McLaughlin seconded by Counselor Conlag, uh, discussion.
Let me start.
Ray McLaughlin.
Thank you very much. I'm page seventy three and one thirty nine. That's all my view there. I think that, uh, this council in the short time of the current year and the objectives that we've got for the next year, I think we really need to be focused on. I think in the last little while, I've seen reports coming forward or rationale for stuff. And I think we should continue on this on this theme. Uh, I think that the committee of the whole has a place in our toolbox. But I think it should be focused, as Mr. Blackwell said, maybe to budget specific or on something of 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 importance. Uh, but I think in terms of, we've got so much stuff on our plate that we actually need to make a decision. So I'm talking about it to be in blunt. And um, I think um, I'm putting this forward. I hope it passes, but it does. That's fine, too. But Mr. Blackwell will be coming towards us in December, and he may have a different suggestion of what the twenty twenty six calendar looks like.
Okay, any comments? Counselor Brown.
Um, I I think there is a place for the committee of the whole, and um, I also believe that we have had no difficulty over the spring uh making um decisions as a result of discussions that we have undertaken. I think the key thing that we've talked about earlier this evening in multiple different formats and levels is is the need for discussion and debate and really coming together with ideas. And um, that that is not necessarily reacting to to a motion or or a resolution. So I I believe that there's a hybrid possibility here, uh, either that that we simply can continue to um, do as we've been doing, which is to, if there's a motion that that evolves from the from our discussion, or as if there's something that's required, that we uh, we we formulate a a something more formal and move ahead. Um, but I just would like would like to see us uh uh, have the opportunity for for discussion. As as we said earlier, we're not doing, we we haven't had the time or the or the dedication to uh to to uh come together for in more informal ways to to brainstorm the directions that council would like to take. So I think we need to have have both possibilities in place.
Okay, any further comments, uh, Counselor Abbott?
Um, yeah, I I'm in support of this idea. I you can, we can break into committee of the whole at any point in a regular council meeting, we can say this needs a more free frame discussion and and pause it to the committee of the whole. I just want to point out to to fellow counsel that we have had twelve special council meetings from January to June this year. It's two a month. We've had a special council meeting at virtually every committee of the whole date. Um, so we formatted it. We have a regular council meeting. And then anything that needs a more free frame discussion goes to the committee of the whole. I think we'd be a lot more efficient.
Counselor Collins.
Yeah, I think that the committee of the whole was a great suggestion by our C. A. O. in order to allow more fulsome discussion at the council table because of maybe a lack of respectful dialogue that was occurring. I think we've moved beyond that. And I do believe that we are capable of having respectful dialogue during an actual council meeting, but with the option of breaking out into committee of the whole as needed. Uh, but we do have a very limited period of time to counsel McLaughlin's point, so the more opportunities for decision making meetings, the better off the residents are gonna be.
Okay, uh, Mr. Blackwell, and then we'll call a question.
Yeah, just a few thoughts for council's consideration. Uh, just with regards to that last one, if you're in a council meeting, you don't want to break into a committee meeting. It just doesn't make sense. You might as well debate it in council meeting be done. But uh, the thing that Cavi and I would warning I would give council is council's not very efficient at managing its its meetings. Uh, you get through very little. You spend a lot of time debating it, and so there's a lot of decisions that have to be made. And not many get made because of how drawn up these council meetings are. So if you want to to plow through decisions, it's best to separate, have council meetings versus decision making and not get and avoid those decisions getting bogged down in dialogue and shoving the dialogue to these other times. That said, another approach that council could consider is start, generally speaking, start every council meeting with a committee of the whole. And if there are any emergent items, discuss the committee of the whole, you could just add them on the take on table at the uh great council meeting. That way you skin both cats. I've seen that work quite well. It's not infrequent that issues come up at council. That doesn't have to wait a month or whatever to to.
Yeah, Counselor Brown.
Um, I think that's what I'm, I think that's where I'm trying to get to, or what I'm trying to say is is to is to have the hybrid opportunity. And I think if if we did have the committee of the whole, clearly we have budget that it's to deal with, the other items to deal with. Perhaps at seven P. M., we start our meeting at six o'clock. At seven P. M., we set aside half an hour or an hour for the for for emergent uh decision making, or we can always do it regardless. But I'm just thinking if if we can try to keep a structure of of loose type kind of structure in place, that would be very helpful.
Okay, did you want to put a resolution forward because we'll be calling a question on this? So if you wanted to do an amendment.
That we that we retain the committee of the whole schedule as 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 suggested with the addition of, and let's make it a an up to one hour. Regular council meeting beginning at seven o'clock, which would fit into the the concept of the the village would know when that was going to occur.
Okay, uh, Mr. Blackwell.
Just a recommendation uh through the counsel program. I would not recommend that you put a time limit on it because you don't want to be bound by that. That may work some days, but other days you might have an issue that you're contending with and might take longer. But but beginning at seven. Yeah, okay. So committee of the whole to seven P. M. when we start regular council meeting. And then we can go back into the committee of the whole as required or or not.
So just in practice, Mr. Blackwell, you start with the committee of the wall. Is there any any agenda comments or and then if there isn't, or you move five minutes, fifteen minutes, or it might be an hour? And then transition into your uh regular committee.
Yes, the committee of all, normally the committee of all meetings are established with an agenda and so on and so forth, materials circulated. Uh, and then in advance of the meeting, council can decide and make decisions that it might could be conceivably that we have a huge committee of all agenda and no decisions. And there's nothing on the main, the regular council agenda if that scenario happens.
And when would that be?
Theoretically, if that happens, council always has the latitude to cancel everything and then extend. But uh, the benefit is, as they say, you'll have an agenda, you'll have that upfront chance of it to to weed through some of these uh discussions that take a little bit longer and anything that needs to be counted for forward to the following on the same day, um, council meeting, you can do that in a very nimble timely way.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Abbott.
Um, just one last thought. I we've we've done a lot of these special meetings we've had, committee of alls and new times around lately, and it always creates confusion and issues for residents. I think we should, residents are familiar with sixty seven councils closed, seven o'clock, when they start at seven o'clock. That's when I'm in among that, I'm invited to come to come join me. I think we should plan whatever we come up with around those times. I don't think I don't think it's fair to residents starting at six once, and then we say, well, we actually need to close meeting. So we're gonna bump it up to seven, then just keep moving back and forth. I think sixty seven's closed, and and if we don't need it, we don't need to start at seven, and then seven onwards is when it's open to the residents. Um, I would still prefer that to be a regular council meeting. Committee of the whole, one week followed by a regular council meeting, but I will remind you, we've always needed, we've always made a decision which every committee of the whole this year, we've had it, we've had a special council meeting to make the decision.
Okay.
Let's jump to my. Thank you, Mayor Barry. Uh, I'm in support of the amendment. I think we should go with the uh, two regular meetings, uh, to share my experience. Uh, my, two of my former councils are here. For years, we ran two uh regular meetings and an infrequent committee of the whole. It was usually items specific or a couple of items specific, happy to attend and do those wholesome things. But just looking at today's agenda and the last week's agenda, prior meetings, got a lot to motor through here. And um, I think our expectation is to finish a meeting within a certain time that for at least a short term. And again, I defer to Mr. Blackwell to see how well this goes, that when he comes back to us in December with the twenty six counter, there might be another chance to talk about this.
Okay, um, counsel, you made a finally amendment, uh, that wasn't seconded. We'll move on. I'll call a question on the original motion. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. All right, item ten point three point five, uh, future council meeting notices in the village update, proposal by Council McLaughlin to state specific time in the council meeting. Information section of the village update regarding the start time.
So moving in camera.
Okay, seconded. Seconded by Counselor McLaughlin, discussion.
Thank you, Counselor McLaughlin. Thank you. I'll be very quick. This is just as Counselor Abbott was saying, uh, predicted. Uh, that it's just, it's just a visual thing. Uh, I, uh, it just makes it clear. Uh, our residents are used to a certain thing. Those who are are maybe have heard something that this is a meeting that they might want to attend, just make it clear. Dial in for, you know, seven, you're in, and uh, the deputy corporate officers made it very uh, made it easy to if you go to the blue box, which is bigger, press here, integrated to the agenda. So this is a bit of a cosmetic thing. Uh, that said, it forces council to come out of closed by five to ten to to allow the gallery.
Okay, any other comments?
Um, just a just a friendly staff request, just came to mind as I'm listening to this. Um, the council meeting just always be on the front page of the village update. And I don't know how many people have asked me why it's not there, where they find it. So people are used to, not the village update, sorry, of the website. They're used to seeing it there, but we don't put council meeting calendar on the front page of the website anymore, can you? There's good reason for that, you find, but I think other people, you know, it's just now came to mind as I'm listening to this, but otherwise I'm spo- I'm.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh. Move to resolutions, uh, number eleven point one, noise relaxing relaxation request, the noise relaxation request, the Merit Tamara ledger for house project being performed at August third, twenty twenty five, and November fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, do we have motion that the council grant an exception to the noise by law twenty?
So.
Okay, seconded.
Second.
It's all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried.
You have fairly good words.
Can I ask the question? Did we strike ten point three point six?
Uh, yes.
Key point six.
Did that the?
Ah. You know what? I I think I had a mark on, but uh, well, like, yeah, I don't believe we did.
No, there we did. Seven, I was seven. Things are going so well there. I was gonna interrupt.
You know, we're moving at a really good pace.
So unfortunately, back to ten point three point.
Okay, uh, request that Council McLaughlin uh to receive so a a report on details of Lions Bay Beach Park and translate connector for decision, the recommendation. And there is three recommendations. Uh, you all have it funny. I won't read them all word for word. Uh, do we have a motion on that? Okay, move by Council McLaughlin, seconded.
I'm sorry.
By Counselor Conlag and Mr. Blackwell.
So you either have to choose to do the doc, consider these individually and vote on them individually, or you can consider them as a block. So just for clarification, is your intention as moving as a block?
To the block.
Okay. Okay, any comments? Yes.
I will. Thank you very much, Mayor Barry. I am, this is a big project for us. I've I've attached a couple of uh news releases uh, which don't conform to each other as you flip through each page, unfortunately. Uh, and I think the reality here is that we're about to embark on the project. There's two projects, and uh, most of our residents don't really know what's going on. Uh, I considered myself a fairly informed resident before I came to this table. And I really don't know, and if people ask questions, my answer is I don't know. I think this is an opportunity for uh the C. A. O. over the five weeks before we've asked for this to come to uh make this um as granular and detailed as I know we can do, so that uh when it comes to us for discussion or questioning, that all the information is there, and then it subsequently gets released to um to the village to the update, and then very shortly after the fireman's event, construction begins hopefully. Uh, this is, this is not about uh looking backwards. It's just about here we are now to the best of the stories we've got. And I I'll leave it to Mr. Blackwell. It's everybody's done a corporate report this time. This is probably a pretty key one.
Okay, we'll go around the table. Uh, once again, uh, five minute maximum, speak two times. Uh, anyone like to go after Mr. McLaughlin or Council McLaughlin, Counselor Brown?
Oh. I I think to to what what this looks like is a is a redo of the analysis of the beach park, and I think that that the the community is going to look at this like, what's going on? Um, I think that that uh you know, I read the the outline that you that was presented, and and it has a lot of of your opinion. And um, and I certainly appreciate your opinion on on this. Um, but I I think this council, um, two members of who of whom were with the former council at the time, um, opted to have the the staff take on this project. Uh, I I I did not vote for it at the time, and uh, but but I've embraced it and would be very, very, very disappointed to see us going back and appearing to go another round on this. So um, I think staff has been provided to go ahead to get this done. And uh, there there is, there's two pieces, there are several pieces, many parts of it. But uh, I I would ask that that staff and 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 I had in my in my agenda items, an update on the beach park and the uh the, um. Rock, rock here, yeah, pardon me.
The translating grant.
Did I?
The translating grant.
The translating grant, yeah, how how that how that was going to be spent in the the pathways and so on. So um, I I've heard multiple times this evening, you know, how how busy staff is. We're asking them to get some, get some projects going. We've we've contracted this to a very capable architect, very capable builder. And uh, the thing is, and and also very capable contractor to build the jetty. So I think uh, I I think we we have empowered the C. A. O. to get it done, and I think it behooves us to let him do it. So uh, I I would not support us going back and and uh seeking more further reports and further analysis of this point.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Conlag or Abbott?
Abbott.
Okay, Counselor Abbott. Okay, councillor Abbott?
Um. I'm not sure I heard the same thing that Michael read when Ron was presenting was, I I don't believe there's. Any suggestion here, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm if I am, if I'm not wrong, I'm not voting for it. I don't think there's any suggestion we're gonna go reconsider any of the decisions made and what's getting built at the beach ranch. For for this project starting on the first of September, I don't think that's the suggestion at all. Um, I think there's a question of can we get some clarity as to where all the numbers fell out? Think staff are gonna be doing that anyway, they have to do that, surprised if they're not doing a spot of change management on the project, I'd be very surprised. They definitely have to do it in order to get the budget session going, so I think this is something that's happening. Um, I I would also like a a final line in Sam that just says, this item comparison back to the original budget. This item was there and it's now there and we've done, or this item was removed or whatever, and I think it'd be fairly, can be a fairly concise report. Would help us all understand where we are, but I I don't think there's any suggestion of us going back and and second guessing or changing anything that's happened. Um, it's just a a reporting function, so.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell.
Just just to, from a staff perspective. Here's what I would push back with, and I would say that this is, this information is nice to know. It's got no relevance on the project, the budget is what the budget is, the grants are what the grants are. Uh, whether you know whether it's twenty-five cents here or twenty-five cents there, it doesn't make a damn bit of difference. What matters is, does the project get built and completed on time and on budget? And council may have interested to see the final numbers at the end of that, but I'll tell you. It just makes me sweat, because this is gonna take me at least a day to provide a quote fulsome and detailed report. And that means I'm gonna have to put down some 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 of these other things, I'm sorry, now I have preparing two contracts. With our legal folks, that's gonna take me a chunk of time, I can't do it all, I only have so many hours in the day, and for me. This is like, if you were to ask me where would this rank relative to what you have on your plate, I'd say it's probably even at the bottom. Of my list of priorities. Um, I could say that it's possible that Mr. Chirkoff could provide a a brief overview of what are the sets. I would also since caution council that some of these grants are, there's some information in there that I would be very. Careful about releasing in terms of how we're spending it, so, uh. Uh, it's. I it's it's, not only is it gonna consume a big chunk of time, it's gonna push us into a corner. Uh, which makes it difficult, when it comes to projects like this, the last thing we need is to be boxed in. Need as much fluidity and flexibility to respond to the ever evolving reality on the ground, so. Those are my, those are my comments, if that helps council.
Okay, any other comments?
I look at this more as a reporting sort of things, definitely not opening up. Another can of worms for weighing in on design and so forth, I think we. But residents do have absolutely no idea what's going on, and I myself, while it is in the hands of staff. We've had very little update as to where we're at with this project and I think that. I wouldn't wanna see you spend two weeks on this, but I think some effort could be put into putting together. Some information and especially for the new councillor at the table who hasn't had. The privilege of even being apprised to the same level that the rest of council has in certain matters, so.
Okay, uh, one final round, uh, councillor McGlocklin.
Thank you very much, uh, I'm. For all comments, this is simple reporting, not looking for any hidden secrets, not looking to go backwards, not questioning what's been done. This is pure reporting, nothing more than that, if I was to. Turn my back and pointed one person in the gallery and asked her three questions on the beach park. Would they be able to answer those questions? And the answer may not be yes on any of them, and that bothers me. Because we're spending a million at one part and four or five hundred thousand on the other, and. We'd have to be able to stand in front of our community and say this is how it's being spent, timeline and areas.
Okay, councillor Brown, and then we'll call a question.
Okay, um, I mean, I've I've been requesting at each meeting, uh, a beach park revitalization, jetty update. And a tannic creek degree flow, because I think two very significant items in our community. And I find it astounding that council has refused to have those, you know, pull those from the agenda. Multiplication, so, um, I I I I agree, we need to have ongoing information. And I and I just believe that, uh, we need to be requesting updates on a regular basis and. Uh, whether that's full report, I I I'm I'm hearing that that's that's a hardship at this point. Okay, I don't support that, I do support regular updates and I do support the community being informed of what's going on. Just to raise my asked questions.
But, okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, on to. Uh, on to twelve point one by law four ninety-seven, twenty sixteen, and then many by law number six forty-seven, yes.
My recommendation is that this be referred to future meeting, and the reason is. Uh, there doesn't include staff report that sets out what these are, why they are. And I would imagine that council would like a bit of insight as to why these increases are. And so on that basis, I suggest we can consider tabling it, uh, till next council meeting, so that staff work.
Okay, uh, anyone in council have an objection with that? Oh, okay, so we'll pay a lot. Okay, uh, correspondence and. Not sure, is the councillor Conlon?
As usual, yes. So we'll start with, uh, number one, we would like to. Acknowledge the commitment of our chief administrative officer, Ross Blackwell. For his remarkable ten years of service in municipal government management roles. Ross's dedication to his role has undoubtedly contributed to the advancement of the municipality. And we are pleased to recognize his achievements, his recognition pin has been mailed to him directly. Did you receive your pin, Ross?
I did, thank you.
Okay, um, this is dated April thirtieth, it just came to correspondence today, so, or on Friday. Um, so sorry for the overdue congratulations, this is coming from the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators. So, thank you, Ross.
Could I suggest that, uh, C A O bring his pin in and let the, uh, um. And that the mayor present it to him. For a postal postal opportunity in front of the flags. For inclusion in the village update with wordage similar to I've just heard.
In fact, you know, I think that would be appropriate.
We should be celebrating every every positive weekend.
The village update, definitely, uh, Ross could go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you, Ken.
And let's see, we've got the R C M P report, I would say received. District of Goldstream support for U D C resolution, I would say receives. City of Surrey receives, B C High Row receives, Grand Fondo operations. Request for support, I don't think we have much of a choice as a community, so we'll say received. Uh, we could definitely do the resolution in support of rail safety week.
So moved.
And second, I'll second, all right, all in favor?
Hi. Opposed, motion carried.
Perfect, and, um. Amendment to Woodcarver's energy received, and now on resident correspondence, we did have a. Note from Penny Nelson, uh, in regards to the no dog sign at the beach. There was some more information that I did ask Crystal to forward me this afternoon, but I don't have it on table. Um, so. I could respond to Penny or is, should we ask this? Who, maybe Ross, I'll ask for your guidance, would be the best person to respond to.
We use the black one.
Thank you, uh, through.
I thought you were offering for a minute there.
No, perhaps I can touch base with you offline.
Sure.
And get this, because I'm not familiar with the content sufficiently to be able.
There is more, this is kind of like the beginning where there's a little bit more background, so, yeah.
Yeah, so if I can touch base with you on that and then formally define.
Perfect, okay.
I'm sorry, now the letter is coming as the chair of the Bird Friendly Committee, or how is that? It's a personal letter?
Uh.
Trying to recall, sorry.
It's.
Is that what came today?
No, this was dated.
I think you should just go read, read Crystal's email from today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And at that, we'll conclude our correspondence.
Okay, thank you very much for that, um, with that, we'll move to, uh, public questions and comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, we had a correspondence from Jeremy Vel- Velarkey's office. Um, and, um, wondering if we could, that was, that came to all. Counsel, I believe, did it not?
I have not seen anything from.
Okay, I asked about that at the beginning of the meeting, I was told it was on the agenda, so. Okay, it's regarding, uh, C N, uh, packing up its operation.
I do.
Whether.
Oh, um.
So I'm just, uh, all I'm thinking is, is there, um, Jeremy is leading a, uh, an initiative to. Try to create a transit, train transit or something like that, I just would 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 like to move a motion.
Okay.
Of support for our M L A in his efforts to do so.
Absolutely, I'll second that.
All right, uh, I I think this is all, did we also approve the the motion to resolve the rail safety week?
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Could I, uh, request that councillor Brown, uh, restate that resolution? Okay. Uh, the challenge.
Well, we can fill in the blanks later.
Sure, okay, so essentially, that, uh, council support, um, or, um, accounts or M L A. Uh, in his, uh, taking the initiative or in his leadership of, um. Rail transit through the, he just got a corridor.
Okay, yeah, I'll move that. Okay, councillor Conlon, second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh, with that, we'll move to, uh, public questions, comments, anyone online, Crystal? No, okay, uh, with that, we will, uh, recess, I guess, we'll recess and move back into. Uh, the post portion of me. Uh, do we have motion moving, both? Okay, so the councillor had a second. Second.
Second, second.
Second councillor Conlon, all in favor?
Yeah.
Carried. All right, Crystal. I'll take a three minute break.